Hello?
Well, I grew up about the other day on the beach. She's far enough down. So, um, I went out there. I forgot to take out my bag. Can you go back and carry it? You'll see. Yeah, I can do it. My brother, one of them. My brother was there. Not doing that. I have a different. That white. When I was little, I was like, oh, they're good. We got to sign it up. And you did this. And, uh, we got this guy walks in. He goes, "That's like a dress." Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's him. Yeah. Yeah, I just forgot. It's from someone from there. Yeah, I think. Get lost. Right here. But everything is different. Everything is different. They get different. Which is how we know. Those were appropriate. Tell me why. Yeah, tell me how. This is our house. You know, he said, "That's not." I don't know. I'm not. I would give you another three. She can. That's the word. And for him, dude. She all. She had to get his interest. Yeah. Only thank you. Thank you. I forgot. Thank you for asking again, though. He asked for her key. I just bring him. Scared. I was getting on teaching the version. I'm free from the problem. I was thinking. And you look around. Just want to get rid of this. I had enough. No. Sure enough. I'm not. I got you. Sorry for the farness. It's about this one.
Okay, we'd like to. Is this working? Is this working? We'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone will stand and join me in the pledge.
Pledge will lead us to the part of the United States of America. In two hundred and eleven, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council has their agenda before them. I know we have some changes to make. First one.
Yeah, so, um, I'd like to make a motion that council go into closed session to consult with our attorney.
Second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will go to the conference room. So the room doesn't have to clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can y'all hear this? Okay, tardy again, all right. Is there motion to re-enter open session?
I make a motion that we enter session, open session. Second.
All those in favor? Okay. So council has their agenda before them. Are there changes?
All right, let me see if I have this straight. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we postpone item A on the regular agenda to May the 27th.
You want us to make all these changes at once and vote on it all just at once? Okay.
I would like to make, I would also add to that motion that we move item B up for hearing on the resigning request R2102 to May the 13th. And I would like to move the public hearing on chapter 111 temporary vendors food trucks up to the top of the agenda. So it would be, uh, item A, I suppose.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of the agenda changes say aye.
Aye.
Are there any announcements this evening? Announcements? Announcements? Okay. Moving on to public comments. Are we reading?
Yes. Yes, I apologize, I was just checking.
Take your time.
I'm gonna have to check on something, I'll get back to you guys later. But I do have, Mr. Thomas Baldwin sent in an email regarding noise. Dear Town Council, I respectfully request that you add a prohibition of unmuffled engine compression braking to the noise ordinance. This is a frequent nuisance to residents of Mills River Village and will get worse when the Lowe's warehouse is completed. The flat terrain here eliminates the need for that type of braking and causes the noise to carry long distances. Hendersonville and Fletcher both have appropriate signage posted at town limits per the attached NC DOT signage standard which you have been provided with. I was told by a previous town manager that he did not favor this because it is unenforceable. That may be true, but the signage would reduce the problem. Thanks for your consideration. The other comment I have is from Jimmy Cowan. It's addressed to dear council and planning board. I was surprised this past Tuesday, April 13th, to see rezoning signs on the old Jolie Hefner Farm at the intersection of Schoolhouse Road and Banner Farm Road. The first thing I did was call town manager Daniel Cobb to find out what was going on. He told me it was a recommendation from the planning board and he had direction from council to seek rezoning on the property from light industrial to low-density residential. I think we call that MR30. The proposed property includes what's left of the Jolie Hefner Farm and also the section of it that was sold to Bold Rock Hard Sider to go into an existing building built for a vegetable packing house. These two parcels are pins 9631-806-531 and 9631-901-838 according to tax records. I can't attend the public meeting and hearing but appreciate, would appreciate my comments read aloud and filed as part of the official record on this subject. Mr. Cobb did say, who, I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb did not say who exactly was making the recommendation for rezoning other than it came from the planning board and that council acted on the recommendation to start the process. I don't know the play, the background, but I seriously, seriously doubt the landowners are asking for rezoning and I don't understand how rezoning this very prime land to low-density residential could be proven to be in the town's best long-term or short-term interest. Some reasons I believe this are, one, the property is in a prime location with light industry and commercial businesses already around it with neighborhood commercial zoning on the property adjoining it. I need to remind the town that you yourself looked into buying the adjoining property parentheses Joe Bergen Farm for a town center before you bought in the current location but felt you couldn't afford it at the time. If the trend is to zone this corridor residential, then Town Hall would have stuck out like a sore thumb or wouldn't have been possible at all. Two, the corridor, including these tracts of land, have water, sewer, natural gas, high-speed internet, good soils and good access. Someone please explain to me why MR30 is the highest and best use of this property. I'd really like to hear that. I think some expert real estate witnesses might argue differently. Three, one of these tracks proposed to be rezoned residential is already an existing thriving business. What is the logic in this? Are we saying we don't appreciate Bold Rock in the community? When I drive by, I see more cars there than the grocery store sometimes. So I'd say a lot of people support them. Four, all four corners of the intersection of Banner Farm Road and Schoolhouse Road are very valuable now and will be in the future for commercial or industrial-type businesses. One corner already has thriving businesses on it. One corner is the school, one corner is residential. That's because the house was built almost 100 years ago and with maintenance is still usable even though it is owned light industrial. The other corner is part of one of the tracts currently in question. That corner for sure, along with the rest of the property, is far too valuable for other uses to restrict it to low-density residential. Not to mention that it already has a very thriving and might I add, good and badly needed car repair business behind it. Five, if the town were going to rezone something around that area residential, I fail to see why the Lowe's warehouse land wouldn't have been rezoned residential since houses are all along its back property line and we're impacted by the development. I'm not saying that property should have been rezoned either. I'm not saying the property should have been, yes. Because that land was for sale years and anyone could have bought it. After years on the market, the purchaser just happened to be a developer for Lowe's. Six, the town itself sold land to Mills River Brewery very close to the land in question and the house is right across the fence from the new brewery. That house is well-kept and is a nice brick house that has been there and lived in for 50-plus years. Let's pick the speck out of our own eye as a town before we get too carried away trying to fix the problems that aren't there. Seven, you allowed Norfin to go in parentheses, which has proven to be a pretty good neighbor, close paren, across from Wedgewood and the school. I think that was a good idea and is fine. But the point is somewhere, somewhere, light industrial has to be close to residential. That's how it works. Eight, there is light industrial zoning like the two properties currently in question are zoned across the road, down the road in one direction and down the road in the other direction. Those aren't on prominent busy intersections. Nine, one parcel in question has been for sale for years now and marketed as light industrial. Why the rezoning now? Why not last year? Why not two years ago or five years ago? It looks to me like somebody saw a sign go up and woke up and realized that something might be done with that farm one day as the area grows besides growing vegetable cows, hay, and providing a pretty backdrop for pictures. Ten, we need light industry and commercial businesses in Mills River. Most of those need water, sewer, natural gas, high-speed internet and easy access. Research shows that these type businesses require a lot less in services than they pay in property taxes to the town. I won't quote percentages because those can be argued, but the fact that they require less in property taxes, I'm sorry, that they require less in services than they pay can't be argued. Now let's talk about residential. For every dollar on average a homeowner pays in property taxes, there is well over a dollar required in services, paren, county and local, close paren. This can't be argued. The houses and the people are coming and will continue to come. Let's set aside some land for industry and businesses that will help support the infrastructure and services these people moving here need. We as a town can't keep rezoning and having knee-jerk reactions each time land is sold or someone decides to do something with vacant land. Eleven, we can all dream that someone would come along and buy it to farm it or just mow and invite the public to come and picnic on it like a public park, but that isn't reality. I think those people in favor of this need to step forward and speak up with their reasons why they think the change would benefit all of Mills River. In my opinion, those reasons would need to outweigh all of the reasons mentioned above and maybe some I haven't thought of yet before rezoning takes place. If there is a shadow of doubt whether this is the right decision, council should at least toss this around a while before making a decision. Watch the rush. Does someone think you've been sleeping and waited too late? It sure seems like the timeline is laid out in a rush-rush method to get something passed before everyone in Mills River that would care about the issue even finds out about the proposal. I thank you for what you do, council. You have to make some tough decisions. It seems to me this isn't one of those tough decisions. I encourage you to leave the zoning as it is for the greater good of all of us. Jimmy Cowan, 103 Brandy Noel Drive, Mills River. And those are the two I have.
We have some sign up for in-person public comment. First up is Jeff Young.
Is this part of public hearing?
No, no. Okay, okay. Tammy Ross.
Hello, I'm Tammy Ross and I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. And I want to talk about the master plan. I have notes. We have two notes. I didn't want to forget exactly what I wanted to say. Um, y'all are gonna talk about the Parks and Rec master plan tonight and I just wanted, I'm here representing the board. We have several people here that are on the board with us and we just wanted to be here in support of the master plan and tell y'all that we have worked really hard over the last year and that at y'all's directive, we have put this plan together with the person that y'all, the company y'all hired to put this together. And everything on this plan as far as everything you see and on this park and the other park is based on all the surveys and input of all of the citizens and the Mills River residents, not just the members of our little board and the few people on our board. This is based on the community and the residents of Mills River and solely based on what was most important to the residents and went in order of what was important to everybody. And so that was how we looked at everything and how the company looked at everything and we are really proud of it and we really are excited about it. So we hope y'all like it and, and we really hope y'all approve it. If not today, really, really soon because we are really excited and looking forward to seeing awesome things happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, to the consent agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, regular agenda. So then we're moving item A, Public Hearing for Ordinance Amendments for Chapter 111 Temporary Vendors Food Trucks. Who would like to make a motion to enter us into public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we enter into public hearing on the ordinance amendment, Chapter 111 Temporary Vendors Food Trucks.
I'll second.
All those in favor of entering public hearing? Aye. Okay, staff, Daniel, are you presenting?
Sure. This, uh, this item before you this evening has been on council's agenda for a couple of months now. Originally, we presented some language that included registration requirements for the vendors themselves. That has since been removed. And so what you have before you this evening is, is the version that was presented on March 11th. And it requires registration for temporary vendors, but no permits for temporary vendors. That's up to the property owner to secure those. Nothing else has changed since your meeting on March 11th. I'm happy to go through and answer questions. Otherwise, staff recommends approval of these as they've been presented to you this evening.
Okay, does council have any questions for Daniel? Brandy? Are there any interested parties who want to present anything to us?
Here, David, I was gonna make some, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
No, you're good.
No, 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 because I was going to address another issue.
This is, this is about food trucks.
I know, but I, but, but I missed the sign up. I didn't know we do all we're gonna do on item number B. So I was gonna talk during that time, but then when we moved it, the sign up team was gone and then we didn't ask for any other public comment that didn't sign up. So I was gonna make a public comment then. And so I'll let this finish.
Yeah, we gotta finish this one. We gotta deal with food trucks. And we, we was, we, we took the item B off the agenda.
And I just wanted to address the council on that. It will take under three minutes after you close your call.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, what I was wondering, I'm Malady Lanning with Bernie Blush Brewery. Um, the registration of what, I don't understand that at all. Why you're requiring, I mean, is that something that I can register? Tell you who my food trucks are or?
Right, that's the purpose, right? It's just that the owner.
What's the purpose of it though?
The purpose of it is to keep track who's vending in town. So in case there's ever any issues, we know who to speak with and we know where those people are operating.
But, um, you know, they're state mandated. Um, I still don't understand why that needs to be registered.
Okay.
I mean, you can look on any given day. We post every food truck that's at our venue, I mean, at our place, weekly. Um, you know, if they have a food truck problem, we might have to get somebody else to come. But I just feel like that's a lot more work for everyone. Um, and the other thing, I was like wondering what the, the permit fee, why we have a permit, a permit fee as a owner. Um, I know we discussed this and I would rather have the permit fee on us than every one of my food trucks because every one of my food trucks would just ride by Mills River and go everywhere else. Um, but I mean, it, I think y'all said it was like $25. Um, I, I don't understand why that fee, I mean, if it was something bigger that, you know, was gonna help Mills River, I could understand that. But, um, that was the only two other questions I had.
Go ahead, yeah.
Oh, I'm good. I'm hanging.
Is that, this has been my concern all along. Is that what bothers me about this food truck ordinance? Is that it takes the burden off of the property owner and puts it on the food truck vendor? Now, in your case, you have multiple
Right.
food truck people coming in. I've been there.
Yeah, I have rotating food trucks.
And so is that, this is my concern, is that I think that it's an overreach. I'm gonna call it government. Is that, now, as you, as a property owner, Now, as you, as a property owner, I can understand you coming to the town. Paying a $10 fee, saying, I'm gonna have a food truck on my property. Or some of the other guys. Is that I could understand that. But why do we need to know? That the. And so. The lobster guy is gonna be there on Monday. The taco guy is gonna be there on Tuesday. Is that why do we need to know that? Part of this registration thing. Is that we need to know that. Personally, I don't think that we need to know that. Is that your customers? Is that I'm picking on you. And this includes the Mills River Brewery and. Bold Rock and so forth, is that it's none of our business. Who the food truck people are. As long as the original property owner says lobster guy, you can come in. Is that? I feel like it's up to you guys to dictate who the customers are going to come in. And so if the lobster guy don't generate no business. You're done, you're gone. And so is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
So that's my thinking is that. Let's don't, is that we don't need to know. Who the individual food truck. And in our thing, it's, it says vendors. And I'm gonna bring that up at a later date or. During the meeting. But is that we don't need to know that. Is that if the property owner gives a food truck permission. It's like Bold Rock. I see Bold Rock sitting back there in the back. Is that? If his food truck is not generating no business. They're gone. Get somebody else in. Is that? The town of Mills River shouldn't care. That's an individual. Property. Right? So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're good.
Is there any additional public comment on the food truck ordinance, current ordinance? Sure.
Yeah, so Will Lanning on Bernie Blush, I guess my biggest question is like, the whole thing about the permit. Is like the only reason for a permit so that you can like revoke it? So like, what's the point of having a permit? Like if we mess up somewhere and upset somebody, are you just gonna take it away and then we can't have that business anymore? I guess that's my biggest question.
Okay, council discussion and thoughts. Whatever else you want to bring up, this is the time. Okay, anything else? Okay. We ready to wrap up the public here? Alright, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Those in favor of closing public hearings? Is there a motion to act on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Chapter 111 Temporary Vendors Food Truck Ordinance.
There's a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor of adopting Chapter 111, the Temporary Vendors Food Truck Ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh.
Okay. Alright, moving on to be on our agenda is the Town of Mills River's Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you all. So as Tammy mentioned, we are very excited about this master plan. You know, for the last year, the Parks Committee and our consultant Sarah Burrows with Sage Design have worked very hard. To reach out to Mills River residents and we've had a lot of really great public engagement through the process. To present the plan that is in front of you all, in front of you all today. As you'll notice, it's a fairly hefty document. And a lot of that reason is for stuff that needs to be included. As just a reminder, one of the biggest benefits of having this document is to make us competitive and eligible for Part F. Grants and LWCF and some of the other really big grants that we want to be competitive for in the future. So as you're going through, you may see a lot of words and things and those are all things, it hits all the points on being able to. Meet those needs for those grants. So, and with that, I think Sarah Burrows is with us on via Zoom. And she's gonna do a quick review with you all and then we'll open it up for questions and go from there. You with us, Sarah?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can, very well.
Okay. I was gonna go ahead and share my screen if that's alright.
You should be good, Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Alright, can you guys see that okay?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure it was up. So thank you, I appreciate you allowing me to come this evening. It sounds like you've had a full agenda. So my goal. Is to present you with where we are in the process. And some highlights from the plan with the objective at the end of this meeting. That allows you to have an opportunity, I think we determined about two weeks. To review it and then come back to staff with any comments. So that we can approve it at a later meeting. So we're not seeking approval this evening, but we did want to give you. An overview and highlight some of the features to help you in that review. So you all have seen this process that we have been following. It's really important to remember that all of these components contribute to the recommendations and we're in that phase right now. The, the recommend and, and action phase. As we've moved through this, the advisory committee and staff have worked really hard to make sure that anything that comes forward meets. The mission presented and developed at the beginning of the process. So there's consistency in, in making sure that you're fulfilling. The mission of the department. I also think it's really important to note that a town of your size has done a remarkable job with input. And so I'm really impressed. I work with a lot of communities that try to just check boxes and you guys have done a phenomenal job as a community. Giving input, comments, open ended comments, participating online through a really challenging time over the last year. To help guide this. So it has been really helpful. We've had. 544 surveys completed online and in person. We've had 94 Mentimeter participants who have provided input. And then we've had about 17 input mechanisms through Mentimeter visiting. The park and local businesses and council and advisory meetings that are open to the public. So. All of these are metrics that are in the report that are really important for Part F and. You've tripled what you need. So it's, it's really great. It just shows that you have community input and support as you move forward, which is fantastic for grant funding. Not just Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and LWCF, but other funding mechanisms. I did want to just highlight some of these things as we move forward. I know that you saw these at the last meeting and you have other agenda items. But I just wanted to put these in here so that we remember that the action items that are at the end come from the community. So these are, these are the elements that the community has expressed that are important to them. And things that they want to see in the town. And so all of that information is in the report and, and comes collectively from all of these different. Input means. The other thing I wanted to highlight was the demand for programs. I mentioned this in the advisory committee meeting. You know, typically you'll see people say, yes, I'd like to have programs. And in the survey. You had about 95% of respondents express an interest in some type of recreational programming, which is. Very high compared to what we see in communities across the state. I'm gonna highlight the. Park master plans, which you also saw in the previous meeting. The changes to that plan from what you saw before. Are a stronger inclusion of the farmer's market in this site. And making sure that there's nature based play and multi-use trails, making sure that the trails within the park are multi-use. Those are the major highlights from the difference, differences that you saw last time. I think I'm out of order here. I got out of order, so I'll go back to that in a minute. When we get in the report. You're going to see some recommendations and this is a different element than what you saw last time. So on pages. Thirty and, and beyond in that section, you're gonna see something called level of comparison. And this is taking all of those findings we just talked about. And comparing the town and how they fit. Nationally and once your metrics are entered, you can compare them to the state, to towns your size. It's a fantastic database. So what we did for this is, is a starting point is using the database information. Is compare where you sit as a town on services. So that is the definition of the level of service, National Recreation and Park Association metrics. And you go through the, the comparisons are towns less than 20,000 and greater than 20,000. So you will be looking at this less than 20,000. And as you grow, that's a big divider. For comparative park features. So some of the highlights I wanted to point out in the report as you start to review this are just the, this really strong demand for trails in your community. So that we've highlighted this this evening because I want you to make sure. When you move forward with projects and capital improvements that you, you understand where you sit. Right now, you've got about a mile and a half of trail and once you add. The park at Banner Farm Road, you'll be at three. And when you compare that to what's going on. Across the country. You'll see these different things. It's upper quartile, lower quartile and the median. For towns less than 20,000, the average amount of mileage provided is about three miles. So once you get the park features completed at Banner Farm, you'll be at, at the average. Right now, you're sitting a little bit below that. And because that's such a high community demand, I think that's a really critical place to start. The other one that I wanted to highlight. Just because it's a little bit different is programming. Because you were in such high demand in the town. I, I just wanted to point out, this is a really difficult metric to compare. Because you are a population of under 20,000 and under 10,000. It's not apples to apples on the type of programming. What's important as you move forward is to focus on the types of programming your community expressed interest in. And then more importantly, making sure you have the staff to be able to implement it. Right now, you're sitting a little bit below. For populations of less than 20,000 typically are providing about 10 staff members. So as you start to add park, parks, the need for maintenance is going to, to occur. And then as you add programming, you're going to need to be able to have staff. To be able to operate those programs. So I just wanted to highlight those because they're unique for the town. In the end of the report, you'll see the recommendations that we talked about. We're not gonna go through these point by point. What I think is really important is. The checkboxes in the report have been updated to reflect those prioritizations. We had not had that completed. We have gone over this with staff and then looked at these based on demand. And put those prioritizations in. So we have it broken down into immediate, zero to two, near term, zero to five and long term, five to 10. And one of the. Things that I think is really important to understand when we say something immediate. A good example would be complete bikeway, greenway, pedestrian plan. Some of these things are just start to plan for them, put them on the radar. It doesn't mean it needs to be. Implemented in the next two years. It means that the discussion needs to start happening so that you can plan and allocate. Projects for the future. And this is the slide that related to the Banner Farm Road. Features, the big thing is just making sure that there's an allocation of space. For the, for the farmer's market and making sure there's the circulation and the lighting and the power. For parking at the park. But in addition to having the, the market on the weekends or whatever days of the week you determine that that needs to happen. Additionally, the first draft didn't have as much parking and so we added part additional parking in that. Front area to support the features that are being proposed at the park, which is the trail. And the children's play area and the bike playground. The other comment that was made was with the shelters, making sure that there's an outdoor classroom. Slash shelter that's versatile, that it can be used for more than one, one feature, whether it's. You know, a meeting or classroom or anything. So that is represented here adjacent to the lawn space. So that can be a really versatile space. The Mills River Park improvements, the big thing that has changed here is just the inclusion of. The skate plaza that was not in the first version that you saw and then making sure that the dog park improvements that are proposed. Showed up better in the plan. They were there before, but it wasn't seen. It was covered by an image. And so we just wanted to make sure that folks understood that's still in there. We're proposing that little skate plaza park area here in the front. And then just the inclusion, we took the graphic off top of the dog park area. So those are the major differences from what you saw. Last time. So our next steps are that you have the opportunity to really go through this more in depth and provide comments to staff. So that we can come back to you and seek approval the next go around. Also, if you have any questions or clarification items, please feel free to email me as well. And my email is sarah@sagedesign.us and I can put that up or have Nicole get that to you. As well. So that's really just an overview of where we are and some of the highlights and I've just, it's really been a great process and I've been incredibly impressed with the community. Taking the time to give input, creative ideas and be a part of the plan. As well as the, the park advisory committee. It's just, it's been a really great. Hands-on process.
Thank you, Sarah. Can you answer some questions?
Yes.
Questions?
Have you? Have. Have you in your study looked? This is it, let's just use the, the Rott property. Have you put any cost estimates on that particular project?
We have started to do costing so that phasing and capital improvements and grants can be acquired. We're not asking you as a council to encumber any funds with the plans. Committing that these will be done by X amount of date. They're really, the park master plan serves as a guide so that you can move forward and seek funding. There's so many different alternatives now, especially with. Parks, COVID, greenways, transportation. So really this is the planning tool so that you can move forward. With seeking funding. We do have drafts that we'll put in and get to staff.
One, one of my concerns. On the Rott property. Is that if we go with your master plan on just the Rott property. Is that you're gonna have to build a two lane road. Is it? Have, have, have you been to that property?
We're talking about the property along Banner Farm Road?
Yeah, yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, I've been, I'm sorry. Yes, I've been there. I was going to go back to the image, and it's not, there we go.
That's okay. That's okay. So is that it's going to cost quite a bit of money. And I seem to be okay with the farmer's market. But is that you've got people going one way, people going another way. And also, you have to be careful because there's a private residence at the end of that road. So it, so basically is that it is not totally Mills River's road. Did you know that?
I I'm not following you entirely. I do know that there's a driveway easement right here. This image, this graphic here represents a greenway trail. So the only current proposed vehicular circulation would be the parking on this end and the parking on this end, and then ensuring that there's a maintained access way for the residents as well.
That's what she was saying. So we will, we have had conversations with those property owners that we share the drive with, and they're very supportive of this plan, assuming that they maintain access. And that is something that is planned for about the locations of the trails. But that, at this current time, will not be a public roadway that we would have to either figure out some sort of gating system or something like that, where the residents would certainly have access, but the general public would cannot get their vehicles up in there. So that all has been considered and discussed and with the landowners up there.
Now, is that going back to the Mills River Park here at Town Hall? Is that, from what I understand, one of your early presentations said that people wanted more open space. Is that fair? Okay, now, so if, so we all know that the lower level down next to the river floods. And it floods pretty badly sometimes. So is that, I see in your plan that we've got a stream restoration yeah, right there. And now, we're going to breach some, some amount of footage upwards to put in a water tube thing.
That's actually part of the Riverbank Restoration Project. It will actually create an access point. That was already presented to you as part of the Riverbank Restoration project that has already been planned for.
So is that we're fixing this to keep the river in the river for the restoration. But up, upriver a little bit, is that how are we going to get the water? Now, is that, I understand what you're saying. I do. Is that my, my problem is twofold. Is that now you're letting the water come through that piece of property, which is going to require the loss of green space, which everybody's wanting, more water coming through that piece of property, more apt to flooding. And that bothers me a little bit.
Do you think they're putting the river through the field?
Is that?
No, that's just a path to walk.
That's, yeah, that is just a walking path. That's grass.
Yeah.
I just mowing the grass.
Yeah, there, the only thing that's calling river access is basically going to be a clearing where people could get a tube in the water.
This is tubing trail.
To walk, because what happens is we get a lot of
Okay, all right. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is that, I was thinking about tubing, people tubing down the middle.
No, no, no.
Okay.
That's just when you get out, you can walk back to start.
Yeah, we get a real lot of tubers, especially in the summertime. And so what we want to do is create basically a mode walking trail for them to be able to cut across and not have to go all the way around to access the other side of the river. So basically, they could put their tube in, float down to the boat launch that's there, then they can cut across the field again and, you know, just have a full day just tubing and having a fun time.
So we'll make sure that we correct that, though, from the way that that's communicated because I don't want people to be confused about that. So we can just make sure folks understand that that's a walking trail.
Okay.
We'll just change, change the way that that's worded so that it's, so that people understand, like the one below, like the Moon Meadow path, it's basically the same thing there.
All right, is it, I, I appreciate that. Is that, I'm still thinking about all this green space on the lower end, whenever it does flood, that the water comes in and it goes out. Is that personally, I don't want to see any barriers stopping that water. Now, is that, I'm okay with the signs and so forth. Is that, you know as well as I do, is that, all that stuff is that, when it's coming down the river, it's going to come out as the easiest point. So I think you had a picture maybe a year or so ago, dinner with the bulldozer cleaning up the the sand. Well, is that I'm, is that, my, my point is, is that, let's get the water, it's going to come on our property, it's in the flood zone. We all know that. Is that, let it have a clear path to get out without any obstacles.
And that's, yeah, that's exactly what, when we do this Riverbank Restoration Project that we got the seventy-five thousand dollar grant for, that is very much going to be addressed in that project.
So at some point, will you do some cost estimates on this plan?
Yes, that will be part of the, the end product is just generally how much things may cost.
Okay, so is that, what I was getting at is that you're talking about lighting. I think the, the baseball field and the basketball court, is that correct? Okay, so we have a policy now, which I support, is that daylight to dark. Because is that, if we have to turn the lights on, then that's going to mean over time, maybe even additional people. And that's what concerns me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council questions for Sarah?
I, I do want to just mention for the benefit of the public, I know you're looking at these small images on screen here, and we've got the benefit of these nice big pullout maps up here. This in, as you look at the, the top of this map up here, what you're actually looking at is the back of the park down here, so towards the river. And I want to compliment Sarah and also Nicole and the Parks Committee because I believe that the amount of green space, this Manish Meadow, the tubing inputs, all the educational signage, and I think this is going to be a tremendous benefit to Mills River. And with the green space, and you can see the, the picture of the two little kids walking through the, through the meadow there. I mean, to me, that's what Mills River is. And there's a lot of really nice, open green space in this plan. And I just, I just want to compliment you guys on doing a great job, doing it quickly and putting something in front of us that is a roadmap. Now, we don't, we are obligated to do everything that we see on the screen here. We're not obligated to spend all this money if we approved it tonight or next month or when, whenever we, we decide to, to approve this. But it, it allows us to leverage opportunities to get federal and state grant money. And so we're thinking ahead, we're looking at what's possible. This maximizes the, the use of space in the park and also over at Banner Farm Road. I, I'll be surprised if we do six out of ten or seven out of ten of these things, but this is a wonderful place to start. And I just, I just want to thank each and every one of you who's contributed.
And I know Roger said it, but I would like to, I would like to see some sort of cost estimates. And I don't care if it's in today's dollars and, you know, we all know inflation happens. But I would still like to see some sort of cost estimates on some of this anyway.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you for that work. Do you have anything else to tell us, or?
Just as a reminder, so if you guys can get me any comments by the tenth, if there's any major changes, we'll have to, of course, have council discussion on any major changes, and it would have to go back to our Parks Committee. So just kind of keep that in mind as you're working on this. You know, if you, you know, little changes here and there, grammar things, wording about something or another, that's not a big deal. But any sort of major, major changes, we'd have to have council discussion about it once we compile all those things. And, and then it would have to go back to the Parks Committee before it came back to you all for approval. So just so you're aware of that process.
All right, anything else on that? Before we move on, Mr. Mr. Galton?
Mr. Galton, yes.
If you want to briefly address us and then you can clear out, so you don't have to listen to the next few.
No, and I'm happy to listen to the next, that's your 160D changes maybe, so.
Yeah.
I'm happy about that. Thank you, Mayor Davis, council members. I would have signed up, so I apologize that I didn't. I didn't know that it was going to get postponed. But in light of that, I do have some public comments. Two days ago, we were in front of the Planning Board complaining, I was complaining, I always complain, about not receiving proper notice. There was another attorney who also objected to the notice. And so with that objection and other objections that were raised, the Planning Board tabled their consideration of the rezoning request for the property where Bold Rock is, is located. And again, I represent Bold Rock Partners LLP or LP that own that property. And so with that objection, I just, I wanted to remind this council that the new 160D 604, which governs the zoning amendments to already adopted zoning plan, requires that all proposed amendments to the zoning regulation or zoning map shall be submitted to the Planning Board for review. Goes on to say, if no written report is received from the Planning Board within thirty days, the governing board, you all, council members, may then act on the amendment without the Planning Board report. And so what I wanted to say is, I think they got, I think staff unfortunately got the notice wrong. Notice will have to be sent out again. Property will be posted, have to be advertised in the newspaper. That's before the Planning Board can hear it. Then the Planning Board hears it, they make a recommendation. They've got thirty days to make a written recommendation. And so I think continuing this matter to May, I believe you all said thirteenth. Thank you. That gives us some more time to, to work and prepare on it. But I think it's not enough time. The last thing I would say is, in the staff report that's online for public distribution, does say, this rezoning request is in response to the forthcoming Making Mills River 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This rezoning request is clearly put in the cart before the horse. Because as the law is written now, when there is an amendment to a, a map, the land use plan changes. So your two thousand and five plan, when you rezoned that neighborhood commercial to industrial, it has a de facto effect of re, of amending your land use plan. So now, that light industrial that's down there on the Bold Rock property is in fact what the plan says. And, and having that changed to an MR30 would be completely inconsistent. And so what my ask would be, is that the next council meeting, that you consider withdrawing that application that was submitted by council and or staff. So withdraw the rezoning request for R2102. And if not, well, no, not if not, but if you decide not to do that at the next council meeting, I think you're going to have to run back through all the notices and get it in front of Planning Board, which then makes that date of May thirteenth for review hard to, to achieve. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. Okay, item C on our agenda tonight, public hearing for ordinance amendments for chapters 153 subdivisions and 154 zoning. I'm going to make a motion to enter into public hearing.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Daniel?
Before you this evening is the last set of changes to the town's ordinances with regard to the 160D changes that came about last year. These were presented to you really over the course of the last several months. But in particular, March eleventh, we presented changes for 153 and 154, and there were three things that came up for clarification and modification, one of which was the ability to limit time extensions, or limit extensions on permits. Reference is 153 dot one zero zero. Two was modify the 153 nine 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 with regards to penalties. And then modify section 153 dash zero zero four to require North Carolina Civil Engineer to conduct traffic impact analysis. So those have been, those sections have been updated per that, the direction. So I only provided you in your packet with the pages that have been changed rather than providing you the other two hundred pages of, of the code. I just want to clarify quickly that section 153 100 is the process by which a developer, if they want to plat a subdivision before the infrastructure is installed, they could put up a letter of credit or a bond or some other surety. And that can give up the two years to complete the project, and they can come back and request an extension for up to one year. That would, that's all would be allowed in that. And then the fee schedules, excuse me, the, the code of the reference to the fee schedule has been included. And then, of course, the North Carolina Civil Engineer has been included as well. And one other thing that came up as part of the 154 discussion is on included in here. On the, it's page fifty-three. You got a couple of sections of code on your, in your packet at line eleven seventy-four. In March, there was a question about the language requiring minimum of thirty thousand square feet for a duplex. And it was, it was unclear. One could read it as a duplex could fit on thirty thousand square feet. In reality, the, the, the intent and the purpose of the ordinance is to require thirty thousand square feet per dwelling. So all we did here was clarify that and define that a duplex is in fact two families living together. And then that each dwelling unit, each side of a duplex, requires thirty thousand square feet. So you have a total of sixty thousand square feet for duplex. And that doesn't change what's allowed or anything like that. It just clarifies that language so that there's no confusion about how much square foot is required for a duplex.
Thank you for making that change, Daniel. I appreciate that. The only question I had, I think I remember the other, one of the other council meeting that you said something about the state might have something coming about the fee schedules for that towns can charge fees, or was that penalties?
That's with regards to penalties.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a pending, that doesn't affect this.
Okay.
It's a pending statute or bill, rather. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Are there any interested parties in the audience that want to speak about chapters 153 subdivisions and 154 zoning? I didn't think so. Not so exciting. Council, any other discussion? All right, I'll make a motion that we close public hearing.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, are we ready to adopt and move on?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance chapters 153 subdivisions and 154 zoning.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, next, public hearing. Ordinance amendments on 154, section 154 dot oh four six corridor overlay. I'll make a motion to enter into public hearing.
I will second.
All those in favor of entering public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
So this change in front of you this evening was part of the, the batch of changes that we discussed last fall, and it was presented on March eleventh as well. And the language that is in front of you is not changed in, in its intent or its, its requirements for that matter. It's, it's, we created clarifications to make sure that everyone's on the same page. And specifically, the, the language around including windows and doors in the calculation for the acceptable materials on the facades and created an exemption for clarified rather that, that the doors in your packet, which human door is the best I could come up with, is, is can, can be considered in the calculation. However, loading dock doors or cargo doors on page three, line above line 53, are not to be included in that calculation. So in other words, someone could not just put a whole row of loading docks on one side of the building and meet the standard. They have to meet the standard without counting those doors. And then section F is new as a clarification. That is that accessory structures that are 20% or less of the total floor area of the principal structure are exempt from the standards. But there's no hard number on the square footage, it's 20% of the principal structure. So if you have 100,000 square foot building and you had a secondary structure behind that of 20,000, that, that 20,000, yeah, 20,000 would not have to comply with architectural design standards. However, if that building were to be expanded beyond that 20%, if it's transferred to different ownership or it becomes a principal structure through a subdivision or something like that, the building would have to broaden the compliance with, with the code. So we added that for clarification, provided a quick example. So there should be less questions about in the future. And that's, that's all we've done to that one.
Questions? We'll cover them. All right. Is there any public comment on ordinance amendments for 154? Their motion to close public here?
I'll make a motion, we close public hearing. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance amendment 154, section 154 dot 046 corridor overlay. Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, that's it for our public hearings tonight. All right, item E on the regular agenda is resolution 2021 dash 03 opposing Senate Bill 349, House Bill 401, increasing housing opportunities. Yeah, I was gonna mention that. Do you want to, let's let Daniel present this.
Oh, um, so as you were made aware last month, there's a Senate bill and a House bill under consideration now at the State House, which would effectively do away with local residential zoning standards and allow anyone to build duplex or triplex or quadplex on any property in which a single family residential home could be built. So in other words, you could look at Mills River 30, anywhere that's zone Mills River 30 could have up to four units on one piece of property. And, and the state would basically usurp local regulations. And they do have the legal authority to do that, sure. But the can, the, the concern is they could drastically change the character of a community, not have, not being able to control the density of houses and, and anywhere in the town, really. So we've, we've, in, in individual conversations with, with council and with other jurisdictions in the, in the area, we prepared this resolution opposing Senate Bill 349, the House Bill 401, to let our local delegation know that the town is not supportive of this request.
So this did come up Tuesday at LGCCA and there, no one was in favor. Just, we just were talking about it in generalities.
Yeah.
Laurel Park really upset about it because of their roadways and narrow roads not being able to expand.
Yeah, they would have a lot of challenges if this were to.
So we were all, you know, talking about, speaking to your local representative, but also this resolution is.
And, and we, we took some examples from other communities to, to write this and we get tailored a little bit to Mills River. But this not, this not set in stone. If you want to change the language, by all means, that's, that's if we're up with it tonight.
I was just gonna say, I, I appreciated the language and the tone of, of the resolution here because anything that I wrote would be much angrier. This Senate and House bill absolutely usurps local authority. And what it means is, if you live in a neighborhood where there is not an HOA, that anybody in your neighborhood could build an accessory building on their property, that would be, could be a duplex, triplex, a quadplex, whatever. But there, it would essentially do away with single family zoning. So it is a disaster for a community like Mills River. And I am very, very pleased that we are pushing that card against this. So thank you for putting in the effort to write this so eloquently and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
There's, no plan came with it to expand the schools or the highways or any of that, just here, more houses.
And it does nothing to ensure that that housing be affordable.
What, what bothers me even more is that I agree with Brian. What bothers me even more is that our senator is one of the co-sponsors of this bill. And what grips me, now plan on bringing this to his attention, is that he did not even ask anybody about this. And so, like Shay at the LGCCA meeting is that this was a major concern, not only to the county, but all the municipalities. And so I think it's our job, whether good or bad, zoning regulations, whatever you want to call it, is that we are out here in the public with these potential people. And so it grips me that somebody in Raleigh, especially from Hendersonville, would sponsor a bill like this. And Chuck, I hope you're listening.
We've got, you've got two, on the other side, on the other side, you've got two house members also from Henderson County sponsoring this. And I'm, I'm like you, I'm embarrassed.
Absolutely.
Three men from Henderson County would not respect property rights. It's, it's disgusting.
Now, Sue, whoever drafted this, done an excellent job. I think it was a little more, is it, I ought to put a little more stern to it, I guess is the word.
I, I did start with a couple of other different towns and I tempered it somewhat because there was stronger language, but at the same time, we don't want to make them angry.
Yes. Hey, and you've done a good job. So are you open for a motion?
That being said, somebody.
Right. I'm going to forebode you, Brian, is that I'll make a motion. We adopt this resolution, authorize the mayor to sign it. And get up to him as soon as possible.
I'll second.
All those in favor of accepting the resolution, say aye. I've already signed it. It seems already, they've already addressed the envelope.
The, the intent is to email it in the morning and, and then follow up with those letters.
Okay. All right, to the staff updates portion of our meeting. Sue, do you have anything to update us?
Okay, first, Sarah Wallace resigned from the board adjustments, which now leaves four regular members and one alternate.
So alternate moves up, or we decide if the alternate moves up?
Right, but based on your decision to freeze everything, you're left with four board members and an alternate until June 22nd, when you take this back up. Unless you, unless you change your decision. Also, Mary Ann Osby has resigned from the planning board. So right now there are eight members on the planning board. My apologies, my, my other part of my report is that I've been texting with your attorney. The way the motion was made to move the public hearing, the question is whether or not it was actually setting a new public hearing that requires notice. She said that we should have opened the public hearing and recessed it. So I've sent her a couple of messages back. How can we clarify this? And she said basically, we can remake the motion and fix it. But the question is whether or not it goes back to planning board. And whether we need time for that. And she's not replying yet.
Do what?
If we was, if we withdraw that, does that take care of it?
Which, are we talking about both public hearings? Are we talking a specific public hearing?
We are talking about R2102.
That'll be taken care of.
No. I'm sorry, 2101.
The church one.
2101.
2101, where you moved it to the 13th.
That one we put on the 27th.
That one we put on the 27th.
I'm sorry, you moved it to the 27th.
Yes, which it has to be re-advertised anyways.
To give it time to re-advertize.
Um, wait a minute, I just got an answer.
So the one on the 27th has to be re-advertized anyways, which should allow for enough time. The one on the 13th, we'll address here and just there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not sure I should read this out. Because she doesn't know I'm discussing this. She didn't know the planning board did anything. If they did, if they've already done it, they don't need to do it again. So you can essentially reset the public hearing.
Which is what we did.
Right.
You moved it. I, I would, I would suggest that you amend that motion to set a new public hearing and direct staff to re-advertize.
His motion was that, right?
This is on R2101.
Yes.
The church one.
Our, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, either way, we have to do both of them.
You moved item B to May 13th. You set a new public hearing on, on 2101. So it's on 2102.
The two, okay.
We're gonna handle that in a minute. We already got a plan.
Okay, just FYI.
We'll cover it. Okay. Any other report? Any other from the clerk?
I would.
No, nothing further from me.
Okay, so the, the problem with the board of adjustments, so we have an alternate that is waiting to take the place.
We have to.
The resign.
Yeah, we have to appoint them to take the seat, right?
No, you don't. As alternate, they are available to fill in for any hearings.
Okay.
So you don't have to take action right now. I'm just telling you that that's what you're at. If you lose one more person, then we could be in trouble trying to have a hearing.
So they have something coming up next month, pretty big. So I would be in favor of us going ahead and moving that alternate up to the plant, to the board of adjustments. So we will have a full board to hear that. And I'll make that into a motion if Sue got that.
All those in favor of moving alternate number one up to the board of adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
So now we have a full board of adjustments, but no alternates. So we'll discuss that in June.
Who seconded? I apologize.
Okay, Nicole, anything else from Parks and Rec?
She is the retiring principal at Flat Rock Middle School and is looking for a after retirement job. So I figure if she can handle middle schoolers, she should have no problem with our park users keeping them in line. So we're really, really excited to have her on the team. And so make sure you say hello if you see her out there. Other than that, we got baseball and soccer is in full swing right now. So the park has been hopping, which has been really great to see. And we'll lose the sun shades up, so we're getting all ready for summer. And other than that, just our picnic shelters have, poor Patty is getting bounded with picnic shelter rentals. We've just had a lot of folks coming in, using that, and it's been really great. So we're looking forward to warmer weather and even more folks getting out to the park.
And Daniel, anything else?
Just a few things. First off, I want to let everyone know that the electric vehicle charging stations are functional. And their, their network, which means you can see them online, there's an app that you can use to, to charge and it shows where they are in the whole US or wherever. And it was fun, we, we turned them online essentially around noon on last Wednesday and we had the first person coming to charge about five o'clock. So we were all really excited about that, ran outside and took pictures. But then, so we've had about 12 or 13 charges so far and by 10, 11 different people, which is kind of neat. We can track all that stuff. Don't know who's who, but we can at least see cut the kind of usage it's, it's getting. So that's really exciting and that, that went well. Just by way of update, the comprehensive plan was recommended for approval by the planning board on this past Tuesday evening. So that will be coming to you and on your, for your meeting in May, on May 13th, for your final review of it. And, and when you're ready to adopt it, we can, we can take that, go that, go through that process. Other update is the bicycle and pedestrian planning grant that we got from the state earlier this year. That municipal agreement was finally executed by the state. So I have that now in my possession as of about four hours ago. So that will be getting moving pretty soon. That is done in conjunction with a consultant. So the, the contract is actually between a consultant and NCDOT. And they're working at the final, the final details on the scope. So we should be getting going on that within the next couple of months. And then input and the public engagement side will come probably in August or September. So that's exciting. The other big news I want to report is we, I mentioned we've hired a zoning administrator. He was on the phone or the line earlier. And if he's wants to speak, I'll provide that opportunity. But his name is Michael Malachek and he's coming to us from the Triangle area. We're very excited about that and he'll be here May 10th. So cannot wait. And that's all I have for updates.
Daniel, is that, would you tell the rest of the council members about Lapsley talking about working with the municipal, is it, do you mind?
Yeah, sure. So earlier this week, the, the LGCCA met, which is a conglomeration of all the municipal. That's the one. It's made up of representatives of all the municipalities in the, in the county, as well as county members themselves, elected officials. And with the American Rescue Plan funding coming down the pike, we, Commissioner Lapsley, Chairman Lapsley suggested that perhaps there's a possibility that the county and, and the individual towns could partner on projects to help make things happen essentially. The, the county is eligible for around 22 million. I don't know the exact number. Mills River is eligible for about 2.1 million. So there's, there's, basically we were starting the conversations on partnerships with, with the county, which, which is probably going to be a very good thing for the citizens of Mills River. That, that's, that was good news.
And end of May, isn't that right? Isn't that what he said? Two installments.
Two installments and.
I thought he said it was in May.
I, yeah, he, Commissioner Lapsley did mention that. From what we heard early on was it was coming within approximately 60 days of the bill signing, which was mid-March. So we were looking around for mid to late May, excuse me, late May to mid-June for that. But we have no, no information at this point.
And now Sue, Mayor Weedman was saying that we had to have a Dun and Bradstreet number and an account. Is that?
We have that.
We do, okay.
We had to have all of that.
We're doing that, okay. So we're, we're prepared to take the line.
Yep.
All right, council comments.
I just wanted to, to, back to what Daniel was saying about the electric vehicle chargers. I've had a few people ask how they use them, whether they're free. They are in fact free, available for any member of the public to use. And they are powered by our solar panels. So it doesn't cost anybody anything.
Can I add to that real quick?
Yes.
That's a really good point. The way that the, the charging stations work is their ChargePoint is the brand. And ChargePoint has an app and all you have to do is install that app. You do not have to load financial information there because these are free. You can do that if you want to use other ChargePoint charging stations like an Asheville or wherever there else they might be. And then when you pull up to the, I'm going to call it a pump, because that's funny. I pulled up the station. Okay, oh, we laughed. You pull up to the station, the, the unit and you hold your phone up against it and it'll open the app on your phone. And it'll allow you to charge your vehicle. The, the pump, the units don't actually, they're held in by the, by the unit themselves until you get the app. And it unlocks it and then you can put it into your car. So they don't just, they won't just pull out. Yes.
I'm guessing if you have an electric car, you probably are.
Yeah. I know, it has to be. I know, I had to go do it once to make sure I knew what I had, how to explain it to people.
All right, council comments.
I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw the rezoning application R21 dash 02. And that we add to the agenda an item for the May 27th Town Council meeting to present a new application.
27th.
27th.
Second by Randy. All those in favor of withdrawing our rezoning request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Sue, does that take care of?
Absolutely takes care of it. Never mind.
Yep. All right, we were there. Other council comments, Brian, Brian?
Good.
Roger, Randy? Oh, BB and RR. All right, and then so much to adjourn.
Are you ready?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.